Good morning, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started with our Commissioner's Status Update Meeting. Today's date is June 24, 2025. The time is 10:00 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Everline, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Hearing none. We'll go into our first item. Justice Building Updates, a discussion item, and we have our Director of Building and Grounds, Jeff Fuller.
Good morning, Commissioners. I don't have a lot to update you with as we get near the completion of the building. I know David Mendez is working on a budget update that you guys are waiting for on that. He is out of town today, so he will prioritize that for next week. So we should have that for you at next week's meeting. Progress, you know, we are moving along. Bauton is just working on punchless items and doing quite well with that. The bulk of the work that they're doing right now is that lower level courtyard in between the buildings. So there's a lot of concrete work and things happening in there to complete that. Furniture is moving along very well. Level three is complete. Level, uh, lower level is nearly complete. And then Thursday, they will take another fairly large delivery, and that'll be the level one and two furniture. And then they are scheduled to continue assembling that through July 9th. And then just remind you that we'll have that open house on July 10th from 3:00 to 6:00. So we'll be putting out some information on that. And then this afternoon in your business meeting, there is a quote from a company called DeVry's Moving Company that is there for your consideration. That's a company we'd like to engage with to help with moving the departments over. It's just a professional moving company that can get all the departments moved fairly quickly and rapidly into the new facility, and that would be furnished or paid for out of the FFNE budget that was budgeted. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions? And you are working on quotes?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. No, that's it. Thank you so much. Okay, next up is County Video Services for Citizens. It's a discussion. And what this basically is, is we have a situation where we have a staff member who has taken over the control room, providing video services and so forth, so that the community can actually see these meetings at home. And we, this was kind of a battlefield promotion, if you will. And so, we'd like to get some training for this person. We have a little bit of, a couple of issues that need to be identified. Get some training for our Director of IT, as well as the person who is utilizing the equipment, some troubleshooting. And so that total comes out to $735. Just wanted to present it to the board, see if there were any questions or issues, so that we can ensure that these videos are not interrupted so that the citizens can watch these meetings. Now, we actually had an issue this morning where two of the cameras said they were non-responsive. And I have no idea how to get these things going. And so it'd be a good idea to have the people who sold us the equipment explain that. So if there's no objection, I will go ahead and get that stuff scheduled.
Yeah. Do you just need to bring it to a business meeting for signature, or?
Uh, well, I'd like to at least get the approval on proceeding with it, and then we can execute everything at the business meeting.
Okay.
I just don't want to show up at business meeting and say, hey, it's 700 something dollars, without the benefit of us talking about it.
Yeah, I mean, if it needs to be done, then it needs to be done.
I would argue we should do it because if something happens, we don't have any formal training on the equipment. So there's no procedures for how to troubleshoot.
I would be sympathetic to that.
So, okay.
Proper way to do it.
Yeah, all right. Next up, item three, City of Hayden Presentation on Law Enforcement Services Contract. And we have Commissioner Duncan here, but I would also just like to point out that we have Mayor Allen Davis from Hayden and the City Administrator Lisa Elsport. Thank you very much for coming out today.
Just need to push that button there?
Thanks for having us.
Who would like to start?
The mayor's going to present.
Okay. Well, I promise you, we tested it before the meeting started.
Yeah. Let's try pulling the wire out of the wall.
It looks like that shut off, maybe.
The light is on.
Yeah.
The fan is off.
Yeah.
I'll do a hard reset, but it's going to take three minutes.
Okay.
Oh, it is, it is on.
Okay, it's, well, she just did a hard reset.
All right, well, let's give it a minute.
Yeah, I watched it go on, too.
Well, I guess we can say that we could use that training ASAP for our technical difficulties. So we'll just have to wait a couple of minutes. And we're doing a reboot on the equipment.
Did you just want to give a little overview of what slides you brought?
Do we have the ability to put a thumb drive on another computer and display it?
Well, it still has to play on there.
Yeah, so it's probably at that issue, not necessarily at that issue.
This is going to go very poorly if I don't have some, because I talked to slides.
Yeah, and it should-
As Mark said earlier this morning, there's more than that slide.
Yeah. Um, it does take a few minutes to reboot, so. Well, you've, you can see the slides on your computer, correct?
I can.
Okay.
Is there another you, enough for me?
Sure.
Is there another agenda item you can go to and prevent?
It's an executive session.
You want to call a recess and make a print? You got the ability to print?
Yeah, we- Uh, why don't we do that? Let's take a recess.
Okay.
So, um, it's 10:08. We'll take a quick recess and get a different projector for you.
Thanks.
Okay, it's 10:10, and we seem to have resolved our technical difficulty. So let me hand it back over to Mayor Davis.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mayor Allen Davis, and I am accompanied today by our City Administrator, Lisa Elport. Lisa and I are here to provide you with an update to our city's partnership with Cootney County Sheriff's Office. Along with the Sheriff's Command Staff, Lisa and I plan to soon present a restructured law enforcement services contract, applying lessons learned from the existing contract, and providing a clear path to establishing a community policing model that benefits the county and the city. I'll start by briefly touching on our history, mostly for the benefit of the public and potentially Commissioner Everline, if I pronounced that correctly. Hayden passed a levy in 2023 to increase the amount paid for law enforcement services and provide a more commensurate service level for our citizens beginning in 2024. Confirming with my predecessors, labor and capital expenses were included, using information shared between the city and the county. Notably, the levy did not pass on its first attempt, and my observation is that a big "Support the Blue" campaign is what carried its support. Since Lisa and I have arrived, we've advanced our predecessors' work with the Cootney County Sheriff's Department. We've asked for and received better information to make decisions, to show the public what are, what needs exist. Our command staff partners provide community updates at our city council meetings as a data point. This year, Lisa and I partnered with the undersheriff and patrol captain and drafted an enhanced services contract to replace the existing agreement. The new contract, as proposed, will provide the county with an onsite liaison inside City Hall and work with our council and citizens to better derive adequate law enforcement resources as our city continues to grow. As Lisa will attest also, if she needs fiscal year '26 is the time to realign our manpower and begin a sound strategy that will increase our mutual confidence and partnership. Looking to the future, the sheriff and I have agreed to continue partnering towards adequate deputy support for our city. But to do so, we need to deliver a contract that both our city council and you Commissioners will agree to. I do not want to see mistrust and cost differences continue to erode the mutual support we provide our citizens. We need to better understand and communicate requirements, and we cannot rely on emotion-based proposals and levies to go forward to motivate our voters to consider additional tax burdens. Moving on, this table represents the financial law enforcement relationship between Hayden and the county. It shows that as Hayden's demand for law enforcement services has increased, so has our contributions. For fiscal year 2026, we are increasing the gross amount paid for labor by 10%. Because we are asking for manpower required- Sorry. To set up our policing, our community policing division, the adjusted increase is 6.8%, which I will explain better on the next slide. If we look at the 2024 levy increase, it appears at that point Hayden found itself short of providing full compensation to the county. Speaking with my predecessors, they worked with the dollar amounts provided by the county. In 2022, Hayden paid more than $94,000 per officer, and in 2023, it was under $83,000 per officer. In 2024, under $92,000 per officer. The amount was raised in 2025, and we propose to raise it again. Hayden has been working to understand and shore up any gap between each deputy's loaded annual total and the amount the city has been paying. The sheriff and I have a shared belief that increasing the amount every year provides for the capital price index and to close the difference between what the city pays and any actual costs. We do so without any expectation that the county is commensurately raising law enforcement salaries. Lastly, the city's paid labor rate has almost tripled in the last four years, showing good faith for Hayden to support the law enforcement services it receives. I'll also note that our 3% tax increase, which is the amount that we can raise our taxes in the city by law, does not cover the increases that we have been supporting the county law enforcement with. It's not close. My last slide explains the percentages used. We, I began with the 2025 labor amount, subtracted the school resource officer, added the lieutenant, to come up with a pre-adjusted subtotal, a show to the labor change in 6.8. So even though it's a gross of 10%, more increase, adjusting for the positions that we moved, we're looking at 6.8. After drafting these slides, it was brought to my attention that I might not have had the right numbers for the lieutenant, because the numbers I worked with, the undersheriff and the captain were, are different from a spreadsheet that was delivered to us Friday by Leslie. So I redid the math, and even showing the adjustment to the cost of lieutenant, I want to show that Hayden has come forth and still paying to cover the lieutenant and providing a 5.33% raise over last year's funds. At the end of the day, I'm sitting in the audience with my partners today. We've put a lot of work into this. We spent the last year and a half to close the gaps, to set forth a strategy that is going to enhance the county and the city, and provide us with real data that we can use to ascertain our real law enforcement requirements and pay for them. At the end of the day, we're all serving the same taxpayer. Our citizens pay taxes to the county as they do to the city. And I'm asking for your support and your leadership as we go together and avoid us fighting over the same tax dollars from the same people. I'm standing by for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Duncan, you've been working on this. What do you think? Is this a good deal for the county?
The part where the county benefits is these officers are assigned to Hayden. However, when there are emergencies and mutual aids, they are able to come to the different needs. So that part is good. I think that the lieutenant is going to add value in enabling the sheriff's department and the city to work together to streamline exactly what their needs are. And so while I think these new numbers that I got last week, not the ones that we're operating on prior, it doesn't seem like we're moving as quickly in the direction that we wanted to. I still think that it's a good deal. If Hayden walks away, then the county's going to be either laying off patrol deputies or incurring another $1 million in deficit. So.
But you've talked with the auditing department, like we all have.
Uh, I, I got their printout. I have not spoken to them.
No. Commissioner Everline, your thoughts on this?
How much does the rest of the county subsidize this?
It's about $200,000.
Uh, yeah, they've got it listed at 244,000-
Right, but there were-
Just for staffing. That's not anything else. So-
Um, that's everything.
Yeah. Um, you know, Mayor, I have to say, you know, that much of this is a situation that you guys inherited. Um, you know, and so from that perspective, I'm very sympathetic. I think being on the board, we inherited a situation, too. I think one of the biggest issues is the amount of the funds that are paid in by city residents for justice fund and law enforcement, which Hayden is at the lowest end. Again, you've inherited that, but it's significantly lower than Coeur d'Alene, for example, by hundreds and hundreds of dollars. Uh, I also feel for you in the sense that we're just now starting to provide real metrics. We should be, if we're going to be in the business of contract cities, we should be able to provide those metrics so that we can articulate in a very precise cost way, you know, where the money's going. They do it in other places. We should be able to do that here. There's a few things that kind of stand out to me with the agreement, that there's, the liability is taken on by the county and not the city, even if we're enforcing city ordinance. Other cities seem to take on that liability. There's no cost escalations in the renewal. It's an auto renewal. It doesn't mention, you know, if costs go up. It doesn't discuss revenue sharing, which is common. I pulled contracts from other cities where if we're going to be enforcing ordinance and collecting revenues, we should maybe discuss something like that.
Just for clarity, are you referring to details of the existing contract or the contract that we've been working on as a draft?
Uh, I have a draft. I didn't see anything in there that talked about revenue sharing.
We're certainly open to contract parameters that will increase the county's confidence in the sustainability to provide law enforcement services at a fair value to the city.
Yeah. And then the only other thing was, there was no clause for cost for incarceration when enforcing city ordinance, which the sheriff can seek reimbursement for that. And we probably should have something like that in there, just in case.
In what scenario would we be incarcerating for a city?
Um, there's a, it's drafted in statute that that can happen, and it's in other contracts with counties.
They would have to have an ordinance that was a misdemeanor ordinance.
I don't think we-
It might not apply.
Yeah, and that's fine.
We probably do have a misdemeanor somewhere.
I don't know all your ordinances, you know, so I'm just looking at the contract and just what other contracts have. Um, so, you know, from that respect, you know, I think that the county wants to have contract cities. It, it's actually better for the cities from a cost perspective, certainly in the beginning until you get to a certain-sized department. And I think it's incumbent upon us to provide the metrics that you need so you can make good decisions. But in exchange, we need to figure out some way to kind of pay for the costs that we're taking on for these additional deputies. And each year, as your charts show, you're paying more money, but you're also asking for more staff. And so it kind of, the cost kind of keeps moving with the, the revenue. And so my question would be, you know, what is the plan to get us into parity, at least with the, the complete costs of the variable costs, if you will, so that we at least are break even on that? And then, you know, at, at what point would we even entertain a conversation about the overhead within the sheriff's office for the support staff on something like that?
I think you're, I wasn't sure if you were ready for us to respond.
No, no.
So my response really is, and I've said this to the sheriff, and I'm comfortable saying it here in front of the board, is that it takes leadership to build a department. We don't build a department and bring leadership to it. So the answers to your questions are really in the relationship that we continue to build with the BOCC and the sheriff's office about what it means to bring to the table an effective law enforcement agency. So what I'm telling, what we're asking for you guys today is to, to see that we're making an effort to try to get there. We need leadership at the table to help us. Your comments regarding the draft contract, while I believe are completely, uh, need answers to, we need help to get, get you guys those answers. And it, it doesn't take me sitting behind a desk. It takes me sitting in front of a team of people. And we see that relationship as a path forward.
Yeah.
Should you guys agree that we could go forward with another year?
Well, you know, and I agree with you. This is the first time that the board has ever talked with you about this.
And same with, it seems like from my perspective-
Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Duncan spoke with you, but I mean, we, we never had a meeting with the board for her to speak on behalf of the board. She was speaking as her own person.
I was only gathering data. I didn't give any promises. I didn't-
That's fine, but I'm just saying, it was the first time I heard about it, and perhaps for Commissioner Everline. Excuse me. You know, when we're in situations like this that are kind of new, it's new for the city, it's new for the county. I like to look at other places and see what they're doing, because there's no point in trying to reinvent the wheel. And other places typically have the auditing department determine the costs. You know, let's get to true cost, and then let's talk about, you know, what kind of service level can be established with that. And the main reason for that is what happens if Athol comes up to and says, we want to get into a law enforcement contract, right? Well, right now, our contract is, you know, in the red with you. And so what are we supposed to charge them a different rate? And so, you know, it works better to have the same rate for everybody if we're going to get into that business. That doesn't mean we can't discuss service levels and figure something out, but at least let's look at the cost numbers. And so my question would really be, you know, if I look at at least what our auditor provided, you know, in '22, we were 37,000 in the green, and '23, we were 77,000 in the red. '24 was a big jump from 780 to 980 from the city. I'm sorry, 702 to 1, a million 77. We were 95,000 in the green, and then FY '25, 95,000 in the red. And this year, we're looking at almost a quarter million in the red. And so my question is, where, when are we going to get to some form of parity? And will it be before our expiration dates?
We saw that spreadsheet on Friday. I'll speak loudly since this isn't working.
Oh, there it's back on. Yeah.
There it is. We would welcome a meeting, obviously not here now, to better understand that. That spreadsheet to me lacks so much context. There were so many fields in there that just didn't make sense to me as a layman. I find it hard to believe that without, again, without some explanation, that somehow the city overpaid one year and then overpaid another year. So the map we're using, again, talking to the county and the county's representatives, but not necessarily to the folks scrunching the numbers. There's obviously a chasm there, at least.
Yeah, I think part of it is that we have this, we're discussing buying vehicles as opposed to amortizing vehicles for all the deputies. So, you know, one year, we have about 236,000 in vehicle purchases, then no, none in FY '24, and then 151,000. But for FY '25, we, it looks like we have-
190.
Uh, we have nine deputies on the contract, but are we, you guys haven't purchased nine vehicles, though. So some of those vehicle depreciation should be included in here.
For the record, that is part of our contract that we are paying for vehicles. It is stated there how many we're paying for. We do have a supplemental agreement each year. We lean on and rely on the sheriff's office to provide us details around how many vehicles we're asking for for that year.
Yeah.
And we have in the last, if we are able to secure a contract for this year '26, we have gotten five vehicles in the last three years.
But is that paying for, is that paying for all the vehicles or just the ones that you purchased? Because according to this, we have nine deputies.
We rely heavily on the sheriff's office to help us plan for. And for the most part, every ask that they've asked regarding new vehicles, we've brought forward that request and paid for them.
Yeah. And, and again, like I said, typically, the auditing department sets the rates, and then the sheriff negotiates the service levels based upon what you want to have, whether that's full-blown deputy, animal control, you know, a quasi-police chief, or what have you. So, you know, I'll just go back to my question, and you can look at the spreadsheet. We can have another meeting about that. But at what point do you foresee, you know, us getting into parity, at least with just all of our variable costs with the staffing and the equipment?
To, to answer that-
To answer that, we need to better understand that. And I think, again, I think there's been a huge disconnect between the county's perspective on what it takes to provide service and what we've understood or what's been communicated to us.
Yeah.
There's no malice by either side in that potentially in the future. And again, with our council's blessing, I'm not here to speak or to commit. I could speak for the city, but not commit. You know, there might be a day where the sheriff and our team says, you know, based on the data, our lieutenant's been helping us and educating us and feeding us, and by working together, we might say, for example, need two deputies. At that point, we'd go to the taxpayers and say, here's a levy. We need two deputies. And we need to correct what I again believe is a huge discrepancy between the actual cost of service and what we were told was the cost of service in '23.
'22.
'22. Then we can close that gap. So do we have an answer today? No. Are we going to punt it down the road forever? Absolutely not. Obviously, we want to be good partners. We want to solve. We want to lead our communities. Do you responsibly and get the best service we can for a cost effective rate?
Well, look, I think it's obvious that you're not getting the, the cost numbers from our auditing department so that we can all look at the same numbers and then have a meaningful conversation. I also think it's important, and I don't believe this has been happening, where we need to properly allocate costs within the sheriff's office to these contracts so that we have their own ledger for this kind of stuff, you know? There's a lot of things that I think we need to do. And so, you know, until we're able to step up and provide that high degree of metrics and service levels and all that kind of stuff and quantify it, it's not fair to ask you to pay for top dollar for that stuff. But on the flip side, we do need to figure out at least some of the basic costs and what we're asking for because we still have to pay for that, that difference too.
I think we've done a very good job, given the information we've known. As I showed on the slide, we've tripled in the last four years the amount of money we've given to the county, our population, and our needs certainly have not tripled in that same. So we're showing good faith, and I'm asking the county commissioners to continue in good faith, to allow us to move forward, to continue what we're doing, and to allow me to bring back a document that I have high confidence that my council will approve.
Well, I'm completely good with that, but I think it would be prudent to sit down with our auditing department just to understand the numbers we look at and answer questions. And, you know, that way we can, if you have a question about it, you know, then we can discuss whether or not it's, it should be included. But if we have our set of numbers and you have your set of numbers, I don't see how we can be honest about the discussions on the agreement.
Lisa, I will make time to sit with your auditors.
I think for our purposes right now, we're, you know, as you guys are as well, working through budget, we're trying to figure out what we should be placeholder in that if we are going to have a contract, we have a high desire to want to engage in another year's contract with the, with the county and whether or not we can rely on the support from the B O C C to continue that. That's what we're asking for today. We're hoping that you'll, obviously with, with some level of leadership, if we can bring that to the table, you'll see that we're able to move the needle in a more progressive way, in a more timely manner than we have.
I, I think the easiest answer to that question is you should placehold as much as you can put towards law enforcement and.
We've done that.
We went all in, and Leslie's heard this before, the sheriff's heard it. We, we were aiming for 4%, and we've exceeded that. So we literally went all in.
So at that point, it's just a matter of discussing what the costs are and, you know, what this board's appetite is if we're underwater on it to, you know, say yea or nay. And then if, if we are underwater, what is it going to take for us to get into parity? You know, and at least that way we can, again, look at numbers that we can all agree on.
Well, I promise you, if we had a money tree in McIntyre Park, I'd shake it and bring it right down.
Yeah, yeah. I understand.
And I'm not being callous.
Listen, you have, like I said, inherited a situation. I know that a memo was sent to you that showed the amount of money that each city was contributing towards their justice fund and law enforcement. Did you not get that?
I have. I'm not recalling anything from the county. I do have a chart of the justice fund and what we pay into it. And I was hoping to avoid that conversation because I can't speak completely factually from it.
Again, it was another document that our auditing department put together.
Yeah, it was not addressed to them.
We, we have not seen that. The only work that I've done is to compare the amount of contributions from each city locally to the justice fund comparatively to their over, overhead for law enforcement services.
Well, I'll make sure you get a copy before you leave. So again, we can all look at the same, the same information. If there's a discrepancy with it, then we can have that conversation. But, you know, again, when we look at these numbers, you know, they have to be incorporated into the calculus of how we're looking at our contracts and so forth.
Numbers are important. I absolutely agree with that. And I know you guys have the same challenges that we do. Limited amount of resources, more, more need than, or more requirements than resources. But in the vein of, or in the, with the, with the desire to have a safe community, I think more has to go into this than simple numbers.
Oh, I agree with you. And, you know, one of the things I've been saying for a long time is that, you know, the, when it comes to growth, which is really one of the drivers for law enforcement services, the county has no say over what the cities do, you know? And, and so, you know, you, you get to incorporate, you have your own growth model. You can have whatever types of residential living you want, big box retailers or none. And, you know, the county kind of gets stuck a little bit with some of the law enforcement side of it. As you know, we've had discussions to just try to get a jail impact fee implemented. And, I mean, that has been, I'd rather be extracting teeth, to be honest with you. It'd be easier, you know? So the, the thing is that, you know, it's all about the cost shifting. And, you know, we just have to figure out a way to work together that maybe, you know, maybe growth should be just kind of, you know, the trajectory should be tamped down a little bit until we can get caught up. You know, I don't know what the plans are that, you know, with your city, and I'm not asking. I'm just saying that, you know, these are our factors that come in. I mean, when we have growth decisions, we ask our sheriff's office, how will that affect our service levels for our citizens? And if they come back, and I think Captain Smart has done a fantastic job of that, articulating that it, you know, it will impact our existing residents on their service levels. Time for a response to call and things like that. So, but let's figure out a time and, and talk about it.
Great.
Yeah, I'll make myself available anytime.
Mr. Chairman, can I be heard on this subject?
Sure.
I appreciate both sides acknowledging that, Robert Norris, Sheriff, both sides acknowledging that this is a situation that we inherited. In 2021, the city of Hayden had three deputies for a population of approximately 16,000 people. It was, the service levels were horrific, and they're, they're not great now. However, we were constantly taking deputies from other areas and providing service in the city of Hayden. And I couldn't with good conscience say, hey, we have to stop doing this. And the city of Hayden responded. You know, we went from $302,000 to where we're at at approximately 1.150 today. So, you know, the sheriff's office, we don't work on the black and white spreadsheet. We work on human terms when there's a family disturbance, when there's a, a traffic collision that's blocking, that's requiring several people, whether there's a shooting in, in the city. We, we work on human terms. But we need to make sure that the city of Hayden and its leaders understand that they're about the 16th largest city in the state of Idaho. And they have to grow commensurate, their law enforcement needs to grow commensurate with their, their population. With a wall, with a big box store, with a alcohol establishments. Those, those do require a higher level of service. So I just wanted to include that, hey, yes, I believe we're moving in the right direction. But I also have to balance the officer safety and service levels of a urban community. So that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, you know, look, I think you have inherited a not so good situation. We've talked about that. But we've, we've also talked about what's it going to take to get into some parity. And, you know, a number I was given, not necessarily by you, was five more years. And so, you know, I think at some point, we need to have a serious conversation so that the next sheriff doesn't say, well, I inherited a not so good situation. My, my real issue is the fact that, you know, we have goalposts, and we're moving towards the goalposts, but then some years we move them further. And this year, we're moving them far enough that we're actually, you know, going more into the red. And so the question is, when will that end? You know, when will we get there? That's really the big question because at some point, we just have to say, okay, is this the way it's going to be? And we just have to suck it up? Or, or, you know, is there a genuine effort to want to get to parity? And I think we just have to have that discussion and figure out when that deadline is. And right now, I'm not seeing that, and if you look at the numbers. Anyone have any thoughts or comments or questions?
I, I'll just say that the, since the base levy override went into effect, this is the, I believe, the third year, fiscal year '26 would have been the third year that we've been planning for that. It's been my second year of adopting the contract. The, the hope is that with leadership coming on to assist the city and how to close that gap is really the whole point of revising this year's contract with a quasi-chief lieutenant position to help drive home the messaging to not only our community, but also to, with, as a liaison to the, to the county. So it is, in my opinion, the right move for us to make in order to get there. Yeah, it takes a, it's, I don't know that it's growing. I think what we're seeing is, is that the numbers that I have are, it's actually shorting up, but it's not necessarily making a headway like you guys want to see in that. If you wanted to be there in five years, we're three years in and not there yet. So. But the effort has been made, and we're attempting to come forward with a plan that doesn't necessarily have the solution yet, but we're hoping to get there.
Well, I think it just comes down to maybe for a couple of years, just keeping the service level the same until you can get caught up, and then let's figure out where you want to be.
I guess we'd have to define what that means then, because service level, in my opinion, if it's officers, number of officers, we are staying there. We're not increasing those.
Well, but we have been over the last few years. That's why I keep asking.
We've increased the number of officers since the contract went in place after the levy rate. It stayed at 10.
What year was that?
Uh, that was in 2024. We have not changed our service. We've only shifted out the num, who's in place A, B, or C, not the number of deputies. So our service level has not increased.
But this year, we're asking for a little more, right?
No, we're not. We're asking for the same amount. We're replacing the SRO position with a lieutenant position, and the net difference is somewhere around $30,000, $40,000. So the service level will stay the same.
Yeah, I think we probably should talk because according to our auditing department, the numbers are not in that direction.
We have right now, based on our contract, the one that's, the one we all inherited, it has down, we have eight dedicated officers. We have a, a rover position, and we have a average detective time. And those are, that makes up the 10 officers based on the current existing contract.
Commissioners, Brandy Falcon, for the record, finance director from the auditor's office. I just wanted to remind you that you did implement a new pay matrix for patrol deputies. So even if FTEs didn't increase, there was on average a 46% pay increase. So our costs to our taxpayers have dramatically increased year over year.
And I think the mayor said that even your city employees have, what, tripled or something like that in the last four years or?
No, I said the.
Oh, the amount you paid. Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. But yeah.
We defined what level of service means. I think we would argue that we're, we have maintained level of service. We're not increasing that. We're not asking to any reason. We're just asking to tit for tat, put a new position in where an SRO is dropping off and that position be in a command level staff position.
And the reason, again, for the command level staff is so we can solve these problems. We can't solve the problems with the, with the existing contract. We can't do it without more hands-on leadership to, and data. So that again, if we go to our voters and ask for more, we're not just saying, hey, please back the blue. That worked once on its second or third attempt.
Well, I agree with you.
More strategic partnership to get to where you want to be.
So what you're saying is you want to have the kind of reporting necessary to justify adding more officers to your contract?
Not just the reporting.
But.
But yes.
But what else besides reporting?
Well, we're going to have a closer relationship with council. We're going to have the ability for citizens to come in and, and talk to the lieutenant. We're going to have, when there's time, for him to walk the beat and to get to know the business owners intimately and to get a feel for the city, to build the trust that exists, but again, to build on it, to get to a level to where if the sheriff says, hey, I think it's that time, we need to add two deputies, we can do it with data, and we can do it with good relations. And it's not, I mean, if you've watched our city council meetings, you know that we've got council members that don't quite trust all this. It's just throw a bunch of money at the county and, and hope that, that we're getting what we get. And they don't, some of them don't have high confidence. We need to solve that problem.
Believe me, I'd rather be sitting here than in your, your chair. I've seen some of that stuff.
Yeah. So we're, so we're trying to solve that. We acknowledge it. The elephant's in the room. There it is. Let's, let's get her fixed.
Yeah, okay. Well, you know, that's really all I'm asking is where do we have to, where do we, when, when can we get to parity? When do we think we can do that? And we have to include these increases for our deputies on their pay and, and as part of the cost.
Arguably, last year, we, we attempted to do that. We came up 4%. We know that the county gave 3%, but we also recognize that your cost increases of your fully benefited pay goes up regardless of whether they get an increase in their pay. So we're attempting to meet that, but again, it's not based on knowledge that we're getting. We're, it's based on hearsay. You know, we think we're going to give 3%. All right, we're going to try with four to try to make it.
Yeah. Well, that's why I think the auditing department should be the beginning of at least understanding the numbers. Let's agree on the numbers, and then we can talk about the service levels.
I think at this point, our hope is, is that going forward, we can build into our budget what we expect will be a new contract for the sheriff for the next year.
Yeah. Clerk Locke, did you want to?
I was just going to state, Commissioners, where we're at budget-wise, so people understand. So if you guys were looking at taking a 0% tax increase with the cuts we made so far, we're still about $2,97,877 in the hole. And if you looked at taking the 3%, we're still $237,655 in the hole. Now, I know we have three more budget meetings left before we set our budget, and we'll be looking at more cuts potentially and what can be funded with fund balance and particularly the interest. But that is just with steps. So we haven't even considered a COLA. So right now, like I said, what we have built in here is steps. A 2% COLA would be about 1.1,484,786. So I just want you guys to understand the numbers we're at, where we're at in the budget process, and we still have potentially a lot of cutting to do. We do have 117 sworn officers at the top of their matrix and 57 non-s sworn employees at the top of their matrix.
And Commissioners, I'm working on getting data to compare the proposed increases from the city of Hayden for their employees and the city of Coeur d'Alene for their employees so that we can compare what these other agencies' employees are getting compared to ours.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, we're being asked to give the deputies more money, you know? And all that has to be taken into account in, in the cost structure. It, it's not fair for us to bear that burden and not at least pass on some of that cost.
Had, had we had known what that was, again, we are coming at it from the place of, here's what we, what, this is all in amount. How can we still get to the finish line? I think that's where these conversations are very helpful. I think they're a little late in that we should be doing that. And you'll see in the draft contract that I've written, we are encouraged to meet with the county, regardless of who that is, the sheriff and the auditors or the B O C C, starting in May. And I think that's an important aspect that we want to take into consideration too, is that the contract does try to lead us to an earlier conversation.
Yeah, and I agree with you. And I think one of the challenges is the fact that the Board of County Commissioners is authorized to get into contracts. No one else, right? And so, you know, I think it's unfair for the board to be handed something with dollars in it without the benefit of what the board really wants to try to accomplish.
There are no dollars in this.
Well, I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just saying, you know, like even last year, that, that came before the board to be executed without any benefit of, you know, what are we getting into? It was just, it was done. Take it or leave it. And, you know, we haven't had those conversations is what I'm really getting at. If it has to do with money, it has to do with the board. If it has to do with service levels, it just depends on what elected official is dealing with that. And that's the way the system is set up. But I think we can all agree, we just need to sit down, look at at least the auditor's numbers, tell us what you don't think is correct. I would be interested in hearing your thoughts on it too.
Is that something we would expect to get from the auditor, or do we have to seek it out?
Auditor's right behind you. So.
Terms of information, on April 30th, the undersheriff emailed my memo to Alan Davis and Lisa Airport. So I know that my preliminary numbers did get sent. I don't know if they were ever read or reviewed at any point, but I'm happy to sit down with the city of Hayden when I have availability. This week, I have a meeting at 11:00, but I'm happy to communicate with the two of them and with any of the commissioners so we can get my data in front of them again, and they can have an understanding of the true costs.
Okay.
If I may add, Robert Norris, I think it's important for your, the city council to understand that a true cost of contract is where we'd like to go. And that includes a police liability insurance amount. You know, that includes maintenance of vehicles. That includes those things, which right now, we, we don't char, the, the board doesn't charge you anything for that. That includes those things, which right now, we, we don't charge, the, the board doesn't charge you anything for that. And those are all things that should be factored into a law enforcement contract. But I have to weigh public service, public safety, officer safety. And this is where my balancing act comes in from inheriting this situation.
And that's exactly the word to use is a balance. Because again, if we drive a contract to where it's so cost prohibitive, I believe you're going to push cities to just go find their own police force or their own law enforcement. And I don't think that's good.
I think some of them already have made their own police force.
And some of them don't have great reputations in this, in this community. I mean, and that's just my opinion. But the point is, we want to continue moving forward. Again, we're all serving the same taxpayer and we want that best service for the taxpayer. We don't want to say the county's making it so hard that now we have to go get a police force of two or three people that's not going to do the fine job that Sheriff Norris's staff's been doing for us.
Well, it's traditionally known that contracting with the sheriff's office is way less expensive than a police department.
And I think that, that you've hit the point that I'd like to make, which I, if I can say this eloquently enough, which is that when we're serving the same citizen with the same dollar, we're best to do it with the same resources. And there is value, not only in the efficiencies within the systems that are already built, but also the service that's provided at the lowest cost to the citizen. And we see that value. And if it's a cost per service model, then what you're going to be toying with between entities is who has oversight over that employee and the outputs. And I, that's why cities likely move in a direction of going outside of the sheriff's office and they make their own departments because they want oversight over that. But I think that.
Is that something that you're interested in, in setting up your own department?
We, as far as I understand, the city has explored that and finds the value, again, with not only the financial side of things, but also from the development of the employee, the employee satisfaction, right? If you're at a larger entity, you can move within that entity and get different elements of your, you know, interest in that job in other areas. Like if you start a patrol, but you want to move over to K-9, you've got flexibility within a larger department that you don't have the turnover as much as you do. I've worked for a small city and that was one of our struggles was just keeping employees because they were essentially not, not having the enrichments that maybe a larger entity or agency would. And I think that, again, is beyond, not only when we're talking about the efficiencies of the dollar, but we're talking about the, the benefit of the employee. I think the model works. It can work.
Yeah, well, you know, when you talk about the same dollar, you know, I, I just, I beg to differ a little bit. I mean, the, the city that pays the most pays $611.49 per citizen for law enforcement and justice fund. The city who pays the least is $226.40. It's not the same dollar, you know? And I, I think that's part of the issue and that's an inherited.
The value I'm speaking to where it comes from. Where it comes from is the taxpayer's dollar.
Well, this is from the taxpayer.
I know. And I'm saying that it's the same dollar from the same wallet, whether it's the value of the dollar might be different.
It's the value, it's the number of dollars.
I would argue that because we've got county people and there's the City of Hayden. And is the City of Hayden pulling their weight?
The way I see it is the county and the city people are the same people.
Well, yeah, they're all the same people. We all live in Cootney County, but, but some people are paying.
I would argue to that fact that if somebody from the southwest part or southeast part of the county, Harrison area, decides they want a level of service pay, are you guys going to pass along a level of service pay to that person when they call a police officer? No, because we all share in the value of distributing the service across all the taxpayers.
Well, you're right about that. And that's where the discussion goes into, you know, triaging any particular area with the rest of the county, one, and two, ordinance enforcement, you know? And that's part of what you pay for when you have.
And that's exactly what this contract is meant to do. It's, it's meant to acknowledge the fact that we are getting enhanced law enforcement services above and beyond the base level that the county would provide regardless of whether we're contributing. So we are trying to identify what those are. And I hear you and what you, I wrote, took my notes here on those areas that aren't included that maybe other communities do include. And admittedly, I took from the previous contract and tried to enhance based on my experience of working with the county over the last 18 months. How can we take what we are currently doing versus what we should be improving upon and ask for review? That's why this is drafted. Can it still change? Absolutely. Those things can be included. I think that's where the conversation can continue to evolve. So for, from the perspective of where we're going, I think we're moving in the right direction. The contract that is currently in existence is not a great contract. It's just, it's not, I think, representative of the work that's being done. And I think we need to move in a different direction. So my proposal is we go with a new law enforcement contract and we adopt a supplemental contract that stipulates the costs. And so that way, every year, the master contract doesn't get amended. It's just a supplemental that appends to it for that contract year.
Yeah, and, and I think that we just have to agree with the auditing department, you know, what those legitimate costs are and then we can move forward from there.
I'd just close with have some faith that we're trying to close it, that we're operating with integrity and we're trying to get everyone's needs met.
Yeah.
We can certainly sit and talk for hours about this situation, that situation, this cost, that cost. I'm more interested in the macro direction. We've proposed a good contract. We've significantly increased the amount of money that we want to give the county in fiscal year 26. And all we want is your support for us to congee moving in the direction that benefits us both.
Is the City of Hayden rich enough to support a larger levy to pay for that?
Well, again, if that's the cart, I want to get the horse in place first. So yes, but not with what I have today, no. But help us, give us what we can so we can both get what we need.
Well, let's start with our auditing department emailing Lisa the.
I need to confirm that she has the correct emails for us because I don't recall anyone.
Neither of us are recalling that.
Okay.
We're not saying it wasn't sent. We're just, it might not have landed.
That's fine. And then let's get you the information and then let's figure out a time sooner rather than later to at least chat. And we can kind of go from there.
Fair enough.
So, anything else? All right, thank you. Thank you so much for coming out. Okay, next up is an executive session. Actually, I'm going to go with public comment first. Do you want to speak? Come on down.
Morning commissioners, Ron Hartman for the record.
Are they walking out? I think that.
Yeah, they're walking out and I think they need to hear this.
Yes?
Yeah, I do. I think the treasurer here and our auditor explained the current situation that the county's facing trying to balance their budget. And right now, it doesn't even include cost of living for the county employees. And I live south down in the county. And I feel that as a county resident, I am getting ripped off. First I learned about I substitute transit.
You have to address the board.
First I learned I have to substitute about transit. Now I learned I've got to substitute a city's law enforcement that doesn't even include the full cost that the sheriff pointed out. And it needs to include the full cost of whatever it takes the sheriff to provide that service. That includes the maintenance and overhead and everything included. And it has to come out of the auditor's office or something and those are the numbers, whatever it is. And if the city doesn't have the funds, then the service is cut back until the service matches the funds that are available. I mean, you're asking me to take a 3% property raise. You're asking me to take a 3% property raise to cover the law enforcement that isn't provided to me. And if this city doesn't like that, then, then maybe they need to go get their own police department. If they're already the 16th largest and they're not controlling the growth of their own city and the county can't control it, and yet the county and the rest of us have to provide a jail and other services for the entire county. And I, I understand that I have to pay for the jail. I get that. I do. But I also think, I'm going to dig a little further along the line, and I'll bet that the school boards aren't paying the full cost for the, for the, the law enforcement that's provided in the schools, too. And the school board needs to pony that up also and have a levy out there. Or they need to lower the service until it equals what they have. You can't live above your means. I have to balance my budget and so should the rest of us.
Thank you.
I've said my piece.
Anybody else? Anybody on the phone? Okay. Let's do this quickly. Let's get this, let's just do the, we have the executive session. That's just going to carry on longer and longer and longer. We need to deal with this stuff. Either that or let's just agree to push it over to HR.
How long is it going to take for the executive session?
I hope very quickly.
Let's, let's just blow through it.
All right, then I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
I move we enter into executive session pursuant to IDO Code 742061A.
Second.
Commissioner Oberlin.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Tari.
Aye.
Aye.